At this time now, we're commending the board meeting Tuesday, September 10th of the year 2024 at 6:30. It's not 6:30, it's 6:40 at the multipurpose center hall located at 1S Fort Bringle, Rio Grande City. We're going to have a roll call. Basilio Villarreal here, Jay Peña.
Present.
Eddie Ramirez, not present. Was told, advised that he had COVID, so he could not come. Dr. Veronica Barrera.
Present.
Noi Castillo, he also had an emergency at back home, could not come. He advised us. John Pope.
Present.
And Eliezar Velasquez.
Present.
We do have a corner. Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Velasquez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pope, invocation.
Dear Lord, please bless us. Dear Lord, please bless us in this hearing. Give us the guidance and the advice to make the proper decisions. Please bless everybody and their families. Bless this district that we move in the right direction and we make the right decisions today. God bless. God bless this district. Amen.
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 At this time, we have the approval of the minutes. Regular board meeting of August the 14th of the year 2024. Motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we do have a public forum. We are request by Rosario Osuna. And this is basically, I would like to present my newest book release of the board on behalf of the R&amp;J Publishing as librarian of RGC GISD. I would like to also recognize a Grúia High School student, Mia Martinez, as she is my book cover designer. I will mention Aldo González, as he is my editor and works for La Grúia Middle School. Rosario, you've got five minutes.
Good evening, President of the Board, Board members, and interim Superintendent of Schools, and everybody else present. Thank you for that. I'm just here to present that we have three more books out, and inspired by the first book, which I also presented last year. And this one, we called it Piece by Piece, The Hard Understand. And my editor is Aldo González. He currently works at Grúia Middle as one of the ELR seventh grade teachers. And I have a fabulous student here in Grúia. She's from Grúia High School, and she is my cover designer. And we wanted to mention that our book is, the first week that it went out, it was number six in the top 10. So it's doing very well. We probably represent RGC GISD and R&amp;J Publishing. So just wanted to mention that. And this is a poetry book inspired by the first one. It still has around 70 illustrations. I draw freehand. And then when I spoke to Mia, because I've had her in Battle of the Books in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, I've known her. She's always competed in art competitions that I have in the library. So that's how I learned about her talent. I contacted her mom, and we've been working together on it. And now we're working together on our next children, on our first children's book. And she's, I draw freehand. She's like, you can draw the scenes, and she'll bring them to life digitally. And she's also tutoring me to learn how to do it digitally. And trust me, it's a lot. And I've been drawing since I'm like four years old, but I've never done the digital part. I can create digital anything, but she can draw from scratch. So, I mean, look it up, it's on Amazon. And then after that, I was inspired by the illustrations that I did. And I came up with the first young adult coloring book. And it's also, this one did make number six, but it's, we said what, in the 300s, right?
Yeah.
It was in the top 300s in coloring books, and you're talking about nationwide. And it's also in through Amazon. So we're very proud. And of course, once you read the intro and all that, it does state that we are from Rio Grande City. So that's another one. And then we came up together, also Mia and I worked on this cover also together. And this one's called With Courageous Wings, She Soars. It's inspired also by one of the poems in Piece by Piece, The Hard Understand. And it just encourages everybody to do their best. And, you know, you fog it up, keep going. And that's also what the poetry book is about. And inspired to continue motivating young adults. And this one is just, it says on the corner, Piece by Piece, The Hard Understand, The Journal. This is just something for a lot of us women, I think, we like cute covers and all that. I thought it was really nice. And it just, in addition to kind of continue promoting the book. And also Mia and I worked together on the book, on the book design. So. And like I mentioned, Aldo González, he is my editor. We do this on our personal time during the summer, and especially during our summer. This summer was a heavy one, because I had done this where I would publish three books. And after speaking to my colleagues that are authors, they received a lot of messages congratulating us that that was amazing, because they haven't heard of, you know, somebody publishing three or four books at the same time. And we've been successful in doing that. We're proud to represent RGC GISD. I don't know, Mia, you want something to say?
Uh, no, it's just, I'm really proud to be able to represent RGC GISD as a Grúia High School student. I know that sometimes we don't come up in a lot of the media, but there's a lot of us, and there's a lot of us with a lot of talent. And I'm really proud to be recognized. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mia and Rosario, congratulations. And everybody who had anything to do. We're not supposed to speak, but I'm going to speak anyway. Congratulations on representing our RGC GISD family, and not only community-wide, but all over the nation. Thank you very much for all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that said, we'll move on. Reports and information. Number one, report on child nutrition program, warehouse, old tractor supply.
PD, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Superintendent of Schools. In an effort to be transparent upfront with the community and the board, we just want to have a report on the new child nutrition program warehouse, or also known as the old tractor supply. Aside from being excited to moving our staff in there that really, really needed this facility, and are excited about that, we just want to keep you up to date on the approved purchases that Ms. Ramirez and her staff have acquired through the federal government. We have over a million dollars in equipment that we need to install by March of 2025, which is right around the corner. We have, currently, we were approved to have our dry goods stored in the facility due to lack of storages. We have an architect and an engineer that were hired at the previous board meeting, and they're currently working on drawings and specs for any renovations or any movements we need to make to be able to facilitate these new purchases. And the one we want to be upfront and transparent about is that any expenditures, which to today, it's been zero, will be covered by general fund and then reimbursed through, hopefully be reimbursed through applications through the federal government, through Ms. Ramirez and her staff. So that's the update on the child nutrition program warehouse. We wanted to bring that to the board and the community, just to keep you up to date. Notice any questions?
If not, we'll go to report on Effective Advising Framework.
Good evening, everyone. I'm proud to announce that Rio Grande City Gruia ISD today was awarded the Effective Advising Framework Grant from the Texas Education Agency. Okay? The purpose of the grant, of course, is going to focus on supporting school districts who successfully complete all requirements of the progress of the previous EAF grant period, the implementation of the EAF priorities for the 2425 school year in grades five through 12. Now with this grant, we started working on it last year. For one year, we worked on the application. We met twice a month for a whole year, doing all the application, reviewing our data, and supporting it, and then picking out our EAF priorities for this grant. And our EAF priorities are going to, of course, be for student outcome. The strategy, of course, we have an EAF grant coach from Region One who will work with us to monitor and support us throughout the grant process. The funding's going to come from the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technology funding. So that has to do with career tech for CCMR, so our funding through high school. So CTE plays a crucial part with CCMR. And the funding, of course, is going to be, it can be anywhere from 100,000 to 120,000, and we were awarded 120,000. This is year one of three. Last year was the planning year. This is going to be year one of the implementation, and we'll have it for two more years. So we'll have it for three years, and the funding is 120,000. We are one of three districts in the Region One area that were awarded this grant. Rio Grande City Grúia ISD, along with Sheraland, and Wesaco ISD were awarded this grant. So we're very fortunate to have that. And the benefits, of course, to the grant, the benefit, of course, the students, okay? The students will be equipped with the necessary resources and tools to make informed decisions about their post-secondary options, and of course, so they can attain a position, excuse me, so they will be able to position and obtain a high-demand growth career that is satisfying to them. Of course, to the community, of course, career in technology, we need to look at the workforce. So this is able, for us, to be able to advise the kids of what's available out there, the programs that we have through CTE, so they can be ready if they're going to be post-secondary, going to the university, or they're going to follow a career track, so they know what they're doing. We're going to start working through the fifth grade, eighth grade, and of course, high school. And how does it benefit, of course, the district? The students will graduate college, career, and military-ready, okay, which will improve the school performance, okay? Of course, our CCMR ratings, we know that they're high right now, but of course, there are changes to CCMR like Ms. Ayala said. So of course, we need to maintain that. Of course, the student outcome bonus. The student outcome bonus comes, of course, through CCMR with TSI testing and so forth. So TSI is another component of this grant. And how are they going to be evaluating us? This is what we have to do every year, and of course, we're able to adjust. But of course, they're going to be looking at our CCMR outcome bonus, our post-secondary enrollment. We need to be tracking that, and we'll be doing that as well. Our FASA completion. FASA is a part of the graduation requirement. So of course, we have to have the students complete the FASA application before graduation. It is a graduation requirement. Grade level expectations will be completed, and there was, of course, like I said, we're doing grade five and grade eight, along with high school. CTE concentrators and completers. This is where the students are following a program study in high school, and they have to follow the program study, the track that they're following. They have to follow it at least three to four years. And some of the programs are available in the junior high at eighth grade, so we're able to finish this before they're seniors. So that's one thing that we're doing. And another thing that we did when we were doing the planning of the grant, we had to do a student survey and a parent survey. And we're going to be continuing to do that every year of the grant, because that's part of the requirement. So we'll be doing that. Of course, it's for career awareness, TSI readiness, and of course, CCMR and financial awareness. My team, my team, okay, the team, I do not do this by myself, like we were working on it for a year. And of course, we have our coach, Ms. Carla Deluna. She is from Region One, and she is our coach from Region One. I am the project lead for the district. I have, I'm responsible for the funding of the grant. And of course, we have to have a CTE representative, and we have Ms. Adelina Villarreal, the CTE director. We have to have a counselor from special populations, so that the transition counselor, Mr. Hector Garcia, is on the team. We have the lead counselor from Rio Grande City High School, Ms. Roxia Cebedo Garcia, as a representative. And then we have a CTE counselor, Ms. Agueda Garza, and the CTE strategist, Ms. Martha Barrera. So we worked on it for a year, for the application. We submitted the application, and we were notified in early August that we were awarded the application. So we're excited to see the changes. And of course, everything that we have means that we want to see the improvement through CCMR, the outcome bonus, be able to have our kids graduate and be ready, go post-secondary or career-ready. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're going to get 120 for how many years?
Three years. Three years.
Congratulations. Well done. But can I ask, out of the 120, the 120 is going to be spent specifically for?
We are focusing, we have, we have EAF priorities, and one of our priorities, of course, is TSI and CCMR. So we are targeting TSI. And one of the things, we have a beautiful testing center. We're going to purchase 30 laptops for testing. So we're going to use some money for laptops, so they'll be able to use it for TSI, ACT, and SAT. Everything is online now, so of course, that's going to benefit our district a lot.
And that's one of the things that they grade us in, in TEA, right?
Yes.
CCMR?
Yes. CCMR is very, very, very important.
And TSI?
TSI is very crucial, and we need to show the growth. And we're going to start testing the students earlier, because they're usually way into the senior year. We're starting earlier, starting early, ninth grade.
Again, on behalf of the whole community, thank you for everything you do. Getting $360,000 is quite an accomplishment.
It's wonderful.
Any questions?
Any questions?
If not, we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Report on Moonshot. Going to the Moon. Initiatives, Strategic Operations School Model. Moonshot, interesting.
And good evening, Board President, Basilio Villarreal Jr., members of the board, Superintendent Ms. Elsa Morris, and esteemed guests. We have a short video that we're going to present to you all on two of our initiatives. I'll start with our first initiative for the Rio Grande City Grúia ISD, the High Quality Instructional Materials District Innovator Program, where we are proud to be one of 11 innovator districts in the state of Texas. This initiative features implementation of cutting-edge programs, high-quality instruction materials such as Eureka Math Teaks Edition, and the Amplify Texas Elementary Literacy Program. And I'm item four, Mr. Villarreal. Item three and four, Mr. Villarreal.
2025 High Quality Instructional Materials Innovator District, spearheading the implementation of Amplify Reading and Eureka Math across Texas. Among 11 district innovators statewide, we are honored to be recognized and supported by the TEA. Rio Grande City Grúia ISD has been awarded $127,000 and $127. This funding will facilitate our collaboration with the TEA and other districts through the monthly community of practice. We have shared insights and refined high-quality instructional materials to enhance educational practices across Texas. As a high-quality instructional materials innovator district, we are dedicated to serving as a model for high-quality instructional materials implementation and providing valuable feedback to TEA to shape statewide strategies. Our steering committee recently visited Albine ISD to gain insight into their learning labs and best practices for HQIM implementation and six essential conditions for accelerated ad coherence. This visit will guide us in applying effective strategies within our district to ensure instructional coherence and improve student outcomes across all campuses. High-quality instructional materials learning lab goals are expose other Texas districts to HQIM by showcasing real-time student engagement with rigorous grade-level content, and support other local education agencies in understanding effective HQIM adoption and implementation. TEA Moonshot Initiative, in addition to high-quality instructional materials, Rio Grande City Grúia ISD is excited to participate in the 2024-2025 TA Moonshot Initiative. Roque Guerra Jr. Elementary has been selected as a pilot campus for exploring innovative educational designs. Creating sustainable models. Our aim is to develop sustainable models using existing school and district resources while pushing the boundaries of traditional education. The Moonshot Initiative provides up to $20,000 in funding and covers all travel expenses supported by ERS and TEA. Over the coming year, Rio Grande City Grúia ISD will engage in learning, designing, testing, and planning to prepare for implementing transformative changes in the 2025-2026 school year. Key aspects of Moonshot Pilot to build and complement existing TEA programs and strategies. Innovative schedules, comprehensive support, engaging curriculum, differentiated instruction, and build strong relationships. We are enthusiastic about embarking on this innovative journey with the Moonshot Pilot Initiative at Roque Guerra Jr. Elementary, and look forward to sharing our progress. Stay tuned for updates as we advance in education transformation.
So those were our two, item three and item four. The Moonshot Pilot School Program is a new TA initiative that empowers us to design bold and innovative models of teaching and learning. So we have those two initiatives that we have here at Rio Grande City GISD. These videos, presentations, we want, we had these videos to explore the different transformative projects and their positive impacts for our districts. Thank you for your support. Any questions?
Again, it's another grant, right?
Two grants, yes, sir. It's a Moonshot Initiative and the High Quality Instructional Materials Innovator Program.
What are the amounts of the grants?
$127,000, $127,000, and $20,000, up to 20,000.
Keep it coming. Thank you for all you do, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Let's go to the next one. Report on HQIM Innovator Program District Learning Hub Grant Cycle. She did three and four. She did, but we're on five. Okay. Let's go to the next one. Report on Anti-Bullying Handbook Update.
Good evening, members of the board, President Mr. Villarreal, interim superintendent Ms. Morris. Before you have an update on the Anti-Bullying Handbook, and the only change that was made was the contact, the contacts for the principals as well as the numbers, because those were not up to date. I provided a presentation, because I want to be transparent, especially with our parents, to create some, you know, some peace of mind for them with the issues that have been occurring. I want them to know what is being presented. Along here, I have Officer Alanis and Mr. Officer Peña, and not here today, Chief of Police. We all engage in these presentations, so I'm going to go ahead and explain to you what is occurring district-wide. Okay. So the week of August 27 through the 29th, we presented presentations at the classroom level. And the reason that we're doing these classroom presentations is to open dialogue with the students. That way, they're able to express any concerns, any questions they have about bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, and threat prevention. So during that week, we conducted 21 presentations in veterans. Same thing, 21 presentations today are presented at the Academic for Enhancement Middle with the sixth graders, and will continue to do so for the next weeks to come. So the first step in recognizing bullying and taking proper actions to stop it. Strategies that combine prompt responses and assistance are crucial to reduce bullying behavior in schools. These presentations will be provided to all students in the district to ensure that we continuously create a safe environment for our students. So when I'm presenting this information to the students, their number one reason that they do not report bullying incidents, it's not clicking, is due to fear. And I explain to them that that is a very normal emotion that we experience, that even as adults, we go through situations as bullying. And I think as a mother myself of two children here, sending your school, your student to school in fear is an absolute devastating thing to do. So I reassure them that we're trying to do our best possible, providing this information, these presentations to them, that they know there are ways to report this. Now, these presentations that we do conduct, everything is in conjunction to David's Law, which is criminalizes cyberbullying in Texas. The bullying checklist are also disseminated to all the teachers in the campus, and that is to provide them basically a layout to determine if it is bullying or not. I went ahead and added some of these slides. That way, parents know, community members know, board members know what I'm talking about. So their learning goals are to identify and respond to situations requiring intervention for victims of cyberbullying, bullying, and harassment, to promote strategies for prevention and intervention of all forms of bullying such as emotional, physical, social, and sexual. We cover the definitions of what exactly bullying is, cyberbullying and harassment, and that's when the PD comes in, the police department, to provide information on how situations can turn into criminal cases. So I'm going to go ahead and let the officer speak for a while on that.
Good evening, board members, and Mrs. Morris, Superintendent. From the police department aspect, basically, we continue to focus on our goals, which is trying to deter as much crime possible. By that, we remain focused on threats, bullying, cyberbullying, anything from drugs, LSD to THC vapes, and of course, the bullying and cyberbullying. Also, well, by doing that, we're going to go school to school, and already, and as a matter of fact, we've done already some couple of presentation PowerPoints, which can help the students know the consequences and what to do, and be aware of it, basically. Thank you.
So I wanted to share a video of what is to come. Today, we had our first tip from the Sandy Hook Promise, learning the process of this. So basically, since the kids stipulate that the number one cause of not reporting these incidents, it's fear, they now have the option of an anonymous crisis call center that they could either call in or text a situation. So I'm going to go ahead and let that play.
We like to say we save lives. The Say Something Anonymous Reporting System is a crucial partnership between students, schools, and counselors like me.
When a tip comes in, we have to act very quickly. If we do not act immediately, that is a child that could be lost. Every second definitely counts, because sometimes you only have a second to react.
Can you call the school and see if the child is okay? Okay, we're going to contact and discuss.
We're either dealing with planned school attack tip, or concerns that they have about their mental health, depression, suicide, self-harm, sometimes even about school shooting threats.
Well, as a police officer and as a father, the SSAR system gives me a level of comfort knowing that we're starting to identify things before they happen.
This program is so great, because it gives them that outlet, an anonymous outlet. They don't have to say, this is who I am. They can just tell us, hey, these are the symptoms, and then we can take it from there.
We're probably the second and third line of defense. The eyes and the awareness of the kids that are actually in the school are definitely the first line. We've seen several tips involving weapons, pictures of kids with guns, if they have threats against the school or threats against a particular person. It's that they're not just, you know, the average run-of-the-mill texts that you may get. They really tell a story about what's going on in that particular community.
I think students appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk about what's going on in their schools anonymously. We see students are afraid to come forward and tell teachers and administrators what they know is happening in the school. When you have something like the Say Something Anonymous system, it allows them to report at any time, 24 hours a day, danger that they may see. And I know that children appreciate that.
I think there's this whole idea, especially in high school, about like snitches get stitches. But I think that people through these programs start to realize that the consequences of what could happen are a lot worse. You never know who in your life needs help, because it's not as obvious as you think. I personally have dealt with depression, social anxiety, and self-harm. My best friend was the one who submitted the tip to Say Something app, and she saved my life.
This program, to me, is absolutely invaluable, and the lives that we've already saved, there's no cost, no dollar amount that can be put on that.
Anyone who's interested in helping, there's two major things that they can do. Know the signs and say something.
So that, I believe, will be initiated sometime next week. And I think that creates a perfect, you know, avenue for kids to report these type of situations. I know that we've seen an increase in threats being reported, and that is because they're, you know, they're finding the courage to do so. So aside from that, these are just some of the pictures, explaining some of the presentations, whether it be bullying prevention. And I'm very thankful to the Chief of Police, because their presence is very important when I'm providing these presentations, especially when it comes to the criminal aspects. In March, we do go out there, we talk about underage drinking, especially during spring break, for those that do drive, the importance of not driving while intoxicated, the prevention of that. The kids are able to drive some bikes that mimic, basically, driving under the influence, some simulators that we collaborate with the city with. Vaping prevention, we talked to them about the House Bill 114, about the, of course, engaging in, in having vapes with THC, whatnot. We even had Dr. Falcone at the Alternative Center that was able to provide information on the health consequences of vaping. Red Ribbon Week, which is next month, that will be coming and talking about that as well. And of course, that's about it. So I'd like to end my presentation with a quote by Stephen Covey, and it's, "Listen with the intent to understand, and not the intent to reply." And I think that as adults, we can all do better in providing that example, because, you know, the kids are seeing our actions, and we need to be able to model that behavior. So thank you so much for your time. If nobody has any questions or any questions?
I just have one question, ma'am. Do we have, let's say, for example, for high school or middle school, do we have a phone number where kids can call in? Let's say they hear something bad, and I don't know what, what bullying or the thing. Do we have a number where kids can call and?
Yes, that is going to be provided by the counseling department. So they're going to start putting the posters everywhere. They're going to go through the whole process with the kids, how to report the tip, how to send in any type of threat. So those posters, they'll either have the option of texting it in or calling it in. But right now, the traditional way is just reporting it to their principal and a trusted adult.
It would be nice to put those posters all around our schools, because I think in these times that we live today, we really need as much information as we can get.
Yes, and we're doing so, sir.
Dr. Garcia, I have, I have, so this, this actually, for people that know me back in high school, I was actually bullied, so this hits close to home, because I wasn't this big man I am today, right? And I think our super can say that I was five foot. in freshman, sophomore, junior, and then I ended up blooming lately, right? But I had the opportunity to meet with seven mothers this past week, and their concern was that there were, their children were being bullied, number one. And then I addressed it with Dr. Salinas to say that when the victim was brought in, the victim was brought in with the actual alleged bully at the same spot, in the same location. And that is, I don't know, I don't want to mention who did it, but that is a horrible procedure. And then I read, I read through this handbook, and I didn't see... I was shown a video of a student that had his hands up in the, in the bus, saying he didn't want to fight, and then the bully punches him in the face. And then they end up suspending both children. So in that situation, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, in the procedures, I would ask that you put something in there where the officers are guided to make sure that when a report is made, that, I mean, we have cameras all over the place, that they do the proper investigation, so that way we find out who the bully is.
Correct.
Because I don't think a student that is defending themselves should be punished as well. So that, that's just my recommendation.
Yes, and I'll make sure I let the person that takes care of the consequences let that know, because we don't want to have the bully and the victim in the same place.
That was one of the concerns of those several mothers, that that was the same issue, and they had reported it time and time again, and nothing was being done. So then I took it upon myself. Normally, I let you all do your job, and you all do fabulous at it. And we're here just to oversee. But I took it upon myself to talk, to talk to Dr. Salinas, and he did an investigation. I'm just pending that.
Okay, yes, that's definitely something.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. But yeah, I just wanted to restate that this has been done, because I know we spoke, and I also had a meeting with some parents. And I think that it's very important that we state again that this has been done for a long time.
For the past nine years, yes.
I, as a mother, I know a couple of months, maybe last year, I contacted Mr. Benya, and I asked him what is being done. And he told me that there was these presentations. But, you know, when I talked to you, you told me exactly what you were doing, going with the officers. I just want us to make sure that we let our parents know that this isn't starting from here, because I've heard that, that this is starting just now, and this is not starting now. I want them to understand that this has been going on, but maybe we're just not aware. And I know you said that you weren't taking pictures, you weren't doing the social media. But I think it's a good thing, and you, I think, said that you would start doing more of it, so that our parents are seeing it all the time, and maybe like have more of that communication and more of that out there, so parents know that you're doing it.
Yes, I'm going to keep, I'm not as good as taking my stuff to Facebook, but it's being done. I have everything documented. If parents want to talk to me, I provide my personal cell number. Like, I have no problem providing them the information of what's been conducted. But I'd also like to thank Ms. Morris, because even before she took the stand as Superintendent, she has always been supportive of my initiatives when it comes to prevention. And now with her as Superintendent, I'm able to push my program a lot stronger. And I will make sure that I let the parents know every step of the way. I'll be back next month to talk about Red Ribbon as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last thing I'll say is like, I knew Mr. Pope when he was a young boy. And like I say, bullying, even in my years, there was a lot of bullying. It has happened. I think the only way I think that's really important is educating kids about the consequences of bullying, educating the parents about the consequences of bullying, and even talking to the, to, I'm going to say to our RGCG ISD family, that if they think or suspect something, to go and report. There may not be anything there, but go report it anyway, who knows? But bullying has been with us for the longest time. I just think education of our children and our parents and our communities is the best way to try and curb it some point, because you're not going to stop it.
And then another recommendation to Ms. Morris, that we put our truancy officers to work to go to the home to see what's going on, because normally, I would imagine that there's something happening. I think the study came out that there was something happening in the home of the alleged bully, and that was the stem of that. And that's where we need to start correcting the actions, because I think it starts in the home.
Yes, I agree. And I'm always available to join truancy if they want me to go and assist them. We're talking to the parents, like I said. The PD and I are collaborating wonderfully, and I'd be willing to do that with any other person that needs my assistance.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yes, thank you.
I was going to say, Mr. Pope, left out one recommendation that we discussed. It's a more concrete requirement for the school safety team that they meet at least monthly, that it be written into the policy. I don't know if we can do that.
Oh, no, I had recommended that make sure that the cameras, you know, that there is a recording. Obviously, I mean, everywhere, other than the restrooms. I know there was a concern in the restroom, but we can't put officers in the restroom. And we can definitely not put, we would never recommend put cameras in the restroom, obviously. But I think that was the whole situation, that there has to be a procedure in place where officers get the camera footage to make sure that the whole story is portrayed out.
The other one was, it was the school safety team, because there's no concrete requirement that they meet. And I don't know if it would help.
We are, we are meeting right now weekly. And this week, it's been like every day. And we're also training our campuses to do threat assessment. We were doing it at the district level, so now we're training more individuals to do it at the campus level as well. So I know that I've been meeting with safety almost every single day this week. And we've been meeting weekly since I've been here.
And I know we missed out last year on possible grants, because the proper protocols were not taken.
There was a grant that we couldn't apply, because it wasn't coded in the system. And it was a million-dollar grant for basically what Crystal is doing, the work that she does. It's very important work, and sometimes it's difficult to find the funding. And we have to always figure out a way to get it done. But there was a grant. But because there was no bullying incidents reported, I was like, "I'm sure, double-check the PMS, there's nothing." So I think a lot of times, these go documented, but don't necessarily go reported into the system. But I think we're doing a better job. I know that we've been having a lot of PMS trainings, a lot of threat assessment trainings, because if you don't input it in the system, and it doesn't live in the PMS, it really didn't happen. So that's important. But I do commend Crystal for, you know, she's always on top of things. She's always asking, "Okay, when can I do this? When can I do that?" And when the whole bullying started, I said, "Hey, get to work, start it sooner, and I want you to prioritize middle school." So thank you, Crystal, and thank you to the Police Department for always assisting us in this endeavor. But it's been happening for a long time. It's not new. I just think, and I tell her, I said, "You got to take pictures. You got to put yourself out there." And I think that's important to know, that this didn't happen this year. I've been working with her for over four years, and she does a fantastic job. So congratulations, Crystal.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, let's go, report on intruder. We're going to leave that for closed session. Let's go to item seven, report on termination notice of Chapter 313 Agreement between Rio Grande City ISD and Vega Solar LLC.
Report item 17. Presented is a termination notice of the Chapter 313 Agreement between RGCG ISD and Vega Solar LLC. This was an agreement for a limitation on appraisal value of property for the school district maintenance and operations taxes dated June 15, 2022, and is amended on December the 15th of 2022. By and between the school district and Vega Solar, the applicant will not commence construction of its qualified investment before the beginning of the tax limit, tax limitation period. Therefore, Vega Solar elected to terminate the agreement. On August 26th, O'Handen, our legal counsel for the school district for this chapter agreement, Chapter 313 agreement, sent an email to the Texas Comptroller notifying of the termination of this agreement. No further action is required or needed by the school district.
Any questions? The only thing is that we had built in a $15,000, I think, scholarship fund into that, but we're going to lose that too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, we keep on going. Let's go to report on certification of estimated debt rate excess collections.
As required by law, the school district's tax collector must certify to the governing body two items, the estimated debt collection rate for 2024, and the excess debt tax collection for 2023. And attached, you will find the certification of anticipated debt collection rate submitted by the district tax assessor and collector, Laura Garcia. The certified collection rate for 2024 will be 91%. And the excess debt collections for 2023 was $0. The estimate equals the total tax dollars collected for current debt taxes, delinquent taxes, special appraisal, rollback taxes, penalties, interest, and the additional penalty from the attorney's fees.
Let's go to the next one, a report on certified appraisal rules.
On July 18th, 2024, as required by law, the chief appraiser of Starr County provided RGCG ISD with a certified tax values for 2024. These values will be used, or were used, to generate the tax levy for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. This is just being presented for informational purposes.
At this time, let's go to section seven, Recommendation or Approval Consent Agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items, which would be item one and two. It is considerate to take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City CISD, and considerate to take possible action on tax refunds for the month of August of 2024. I guess the only thing we need is, if you could just, you don't have to say the amounts of who donated money in item one.
Donations for the Gruya Middle School Mariachi and Rio Grande City High School Mariachi, we had anonymous donors. Again, Rio Grande City High School Mariachi, Regina Enterprises, Gruya Middle School Mariachi, Regina Enterprise, Gruya Middle School Mariachi, the Pediatric Care Center, Rio Grande City High School Mariachi, the Pediatric Care Center, early college high school scholarships, Herb Jones, Gruya High School athletic trainers, Ricardo Garza. And for the athletic department scholarships, it was an anonymous donation.
Do I have a motion for item one and two? So move. Second. Take it. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can have a motion to approve item three, four, and five as presented in our board packet with any discussion. So these are for schools, basically allowing, allowing some of our school facilities then to the city of Rio Grande, the county of Starr County Attorney Roné P. Montalvo. And one is the change order on the curlock. But any questions?
Move to approve three, four, and five with discussion on five.
How was it again?
I move to approve item three, four, and five with the discussion on item five.
Okay. There's a motion to approve item three, four, and five with discussion on five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Discussion.
Basically, what is, what is the change order? Mr. Garza.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and interim Superintendent Morris. That item has to do with a volleyball system. The volleyball system was changed from something that was suspended and just drops down from the ceiling to one that is on the ground, inserted on sleeves, where you put the volleyball poles in sleeves, rather than a suspended system. And the trade-off on both is what this is.
We have a, what's the contingency we still have left there, could I ask?
We have a contingency of $111,791.
And how much is this costing?
Well, this is a credit.
A credit?
A credit of $4,155.
So basically, they're changing the system of the volleyball?
That's correct.
And they're going to give us a credit for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can I have a motion to approve items six, seven, and eight as presented in our board packet with any discussion?
I move to approve items six, seven, and eight.
Second. Second, Mr. Yassar Velazquez. Okay, I have a couple of questions. Let's start off with item six, pay application, the cosmetology. How much of the, first of all, how much is still in the contingent? And how much do we, what percent completion do we have?
Okay. The contingency has $34,000.
Okay.
And right now, if you pay this amount, we have a, we're holding a retainage of $111,000. $111,000.
How far are we from, have they, is it already completed? Almost completed?
It's, the project is essentially complete. There's some small items that need attention. And some of the items, we're going to have to haggle with them. But essentially, the project has been built. But the punch list hasn't been completed yet.
But when do you think we're going to be able to have kids or children?
If we can, there's some work that has to be done. For example, some painting. And if we can do that with the students there, with some barricades, where they're painting, I think we can do it like in a week.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, it was supposed to be completed before the beginning of the school year, correct?
In July, that's correct, sir. And they have one, one person basically doing this, finishing out the project. I don't know why, they don't put more people out there.
Now, I want to speak personally. If, I think we need children in these, in these classes. And if by next time, they still, we still have children in those classes, I would have a lot of trouble paying any more applications, even though there's still $111,000 out. But we do need our, our children in those classrooms.
Yeah, I can't, I can't pay this amount until the contingencies are complete. I can give them a partial. For example, let's say there's $5,000 of work that they finished. I can, I can approve the payment of that $5,000, but keeping the rest until the rest of the items are complete.
Implore them, sir, that it's absolutely, I mean, next, by the next meeting, I want to make sure that we have children in there, okay?
Sir, you know, if they had a crew out there, they could knock it out. I mean, they could have knocked it out a month ago. But there's one guy working, and it's too much for one guy.
Just tell them, for me, I'm just speaking out personally. If they don't, if, in my opinion, if they haven't completed by next board meeting, I don't see how we can pay them anymore.
I'm sorry, I have a question with the contingency amount. That amount, I don't know if you can answer somebody else. It's an amount that's there for these things that come up, right? Change orders. Does that money, it doesn't have to be spent, correct?
No.
And what happens to that money if it's not spent? Because, for example, if I go to Walmart with $100, I don't have to spend the $100 if I only need to spend 80, right?
It goes back to you.
It goes back, okay. But my next question is, if it's bond money, the bond money has to be used for that and that only, right? So then what happens? So with that money, if, if it's, if thousands of dollars are left over, because you don't use them, what happens? They get lost?
That was above my head, I don't know.
That would be a question for Director Robles.
Because I'm just wondering, if they're going to get lost, okay, well, let's do change orders and get that amount in. But if we don't need it, is there anywhere else it can go to?
I suppose it would go back into other construction projects, but I'm just guessing.
Okay, let's see.
Okay, that project first falls under Proposition A, so we do have, I guess, space, or we are allowed to move it to other projects. However, to answer your question, bond monies can only be used for construction projects approved by the taxpayers or to pay the debt on those bonds. So if there's any money left, we can always use that money to pay on the principal or interest of those bonds.
That's perfect. So we can be conservative with these contingencies and try to keep it and lower debt. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Yassar. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, let's go to, can I have a motion to approve item nine, nine, I guess? Considering take possible action in agreement between E M S, I N C D B A, inform K twelve, and Rio Grande City C I S D for automation of forms and workflow services for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Ms. Robles, if you can explain to us.
I'm excited about this one. We've tried to give it a paper for a long time.
So currently, our district submits all central office forms manually or on paper. And we have an over reliance of paper. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. Many times we do have lost forms as a result of this process. All these forms require multiple approvals and workflows, making it more difficult to streamline the process with less paper. These forms, again, are completed manually, which is also time consuming and prone to errors. Transitioning to a digital and sustainable paperless environment, all in one user friendly place, will be more efficient to see the paper processes will be streamlined. With this platform, the district will have efficient management of forms, workflows, and e-signatures across departments, campuses, and the central office. The forms will be automated, uh, include travel requests, time reports for regular and supplement pay, which we have about fifteen different type of those reports, absence from duty reports, donation forms, vendor forms, employee name and address changes, forms, fundraiser approval forms, vendor payment approval forms, vendor direct deposit authorization forms, supplemental health insurance claims forms, uh, employee change of status forms, and also decision making forms which are used, uh, for these, to come up or to build that agenda. So basically, we're asking, uh, your approval, uh, to transition into this digital platform.
I know what this is about. I was privileged to be at a spot where they went paperless. It is gonna be the most eye awakening thing for this district. A year from now, you're gonna say, how come we didn't do it sooner than we did it? It is, uh, it's the best thing that could ever happen.
Yes, sir.
I challenge my fellow board members to go paperless. On this one, we we renewed the leases in June of twenty twenty-four for the copiers. I know it's on a per page, right? But I think there should be, I don't know if it's an annual renewal or, but do you think this is one that you get to the point where you can eliminate some of those?
Yes, I do believe so. Paper and copies and everything else.
I think you're gonna do fantastic. It's eye awakening.
Yes.
When it comes to numbers, I trust you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on this or not?
I'll motion to approve.
Second. A second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item ten, considering take possible action on a resolution to adopt the tax year twenty twenty-four maintenance and operation and debt service tax. Ms. Robles?
Following the requirements of the Texas Education Code, section forty-four point zero zero four, a notice of public meeting to discuss the budget and proposal tax rate was published. A public meeting was was held, and the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget was adopted. A resolution to adopt the tax rate for twenty twenty-four is attached. The administration recommends the adoption of a tax rate of point sixty-nine ninety-four cents for M and O and a tax rate of point forty-six twenty-nine cents for the interest and sinking for a total tax rate for twenty twenty-four of a dollar with sixteen twenty-three cents for one hundred dollar property valuation.
A dollar what?
A dollar sixteen twenty-three.
Can I ask you a couple of questions, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Our M and O went down?
Yes, sir. Last year, our M and O was at seventy seventeen, and this year, it will be point sixty-nine ninety-four.
Did our I N S go down a tiny bit?
Yes, sir. Last year, it was at point forty-six ninety-one, and this year, we are proposing point forty-six twenty-nine.
Okay, let me, last question I have, who sets our tax rate, ma'am?
The M and O tax rate, the compressed tax rate, is set by T E A, and it's based on the property value submitted or provided to us by the appraisal district.
So our tax rate is set really by the state, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So basically taxes in the district are slightly going down, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more questions?
And, um, Ms. Deanna, just to verify, it did go down. Our appraisal values went up, right?
Yes.
Uh, but we as a district will not be changing our rates so that we compensate for those.
No. Basically, we're required by the state to compress or suppress our tax rates, which will continue to decrease. And so basically, the state, uh, makes up for that loss in the tax collections.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
So taxes are going down, right, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
That's an answer to the world. Anyway, with that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's go to approve item eleven, twelve, and thirteen as presented in our board packet.
I saw move.
Second. A second. Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's go to item fourteen. It's got, uh, R F P twenty-five oh seven, R F P twenty-five oh eight, R F P twenty-five oh nine, R F P twenty-five ten, R F P twenty-five eleven, and R F P twenty-five thirteen. And awarding these things, the only thing I need to make sure before you have a motion, are they, they're always, are we getting the best price, the best deals?
Uh, yes, sir, that is correct. I do want to mention, if I can, if I can amend, um, one of the bids that we're bringing forward to you all. It would be R F P twenty-five dash zero nine, which is a fire extinguisher services. I know we had put on paper to recommend guardian safety services, but we're hoping if we can amend it to approve both in case we can't get one of them to come out here, if we can get the other one.
I think that's a good idea.
Just to have two.
Prices are more or less the same?
They're about the same. They vary on the certain services and products that they provide. The one that we recommended, obviously, is the lower one on the annual inspections. So, but we're asking if we can do that to have both, just in case one can't come, we have another vendor to come out here. If that's okay with you all.
To reflect what Chris just said.
I could, I'd motion for that, but who are we approving on fourteen? Twenty-five oh seven? Is it both?
No, it's twenty-five oh nine.
Twenty-five.
So twenty-five oh nine, they're going with the lowest bid, but having an alternative, which is the next one.
To have, to have both, yes.
On availability.
And then twenty-five oh seven, we're approving both, Pro Valley and two two F?
The twenty-five oh seven is the lowest bid.
We're recommending both, as per Mrs. Ramirez.
You're going for both?
Yes.
Kids are getting Akashi beef? They went, they went low on the bid? I'm shocked, I'm seeing what that beef costs in other places. I'm all for it. A motion as amended.
Okay, can, okay, there's a motion as amended on item fourteen, there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Let the record reflect that Dr. Barrera stepped out, and I will, uh, when she steps back in, I will reflect that in in our minutes. Let's go to item, uh, fifteen, no action on item fifteen, correct, Mr. Chris?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
No, I, so let's go to item, can we, a motion to approve items sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and twenty as are presented in our board packet.
So move.
A second with discussion.
Okay. There's a second, okay, discussion?
Um, the color scheme on the mariachi. Oh, there we go.
Is there any way to go with purple so they can be used for both? Or, no, just kidding. Look at his face.
No, no, no.
Good evening, everyone. They're gonna be pink, not purple.
They'll just change the camera filters.
Just one quick question, I I have the same, you know, I I used to look at the mariachis of La Gruya, and they were blue. I looked at the mariachis of Rio Grande City, and they were red. And I always say red and white are colors, and blue and white are their colors. But I looked at the mariachis, the uniforms, and it's nice that they get them. We're finally getting them to you, but now I notice they're all black and a little bit of red, and all black and a little bit of blue. What's that about? Maybe you can explain to us.
Right now, we're still brainstorming on the colors. Rio High School will be black with red stitching. And the gala will be silver, red moño. And the sombrero will be charcoal gray with red, and the vest will be red. So it's a two, a two-tone, that's what's in right now. Basically, that's what, uh, Gruya also is gonna be. Right now, they're thinking, uh, gray with black or a navy blue with gray.
I just want to know what goes into the thinking of, like, the mariachis, the Rio Grande head, were all red, uh, most of it, and the, and the Rio were all blue. How do we go, how how does the dynamic change, maybe a better word?
We just changed the colors throughout the year, so it won't look the same.
How was that again?
We just changed the colors throughout the year, so every time we get new uniforms, we change the style and the color.
But you did say that you're you're considering the color scheme, uh, it's not the one in the book, right?
No, those are the ones that they have right now.
Yes, but the ones that you will be, uh, going out for, they're gonna be different?
A two-tone, yes.
And I would imagine, would you present that to us for a, our possible consideration?
Yes.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. Dr. Barrera, we're, any other questions? We're on item sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. We have a motion, and there's a second, and we're just, uh, questions on mariachi. They finally got the mariachis for the high schools and the middle schools, and we're just talking the color schemes. Rio Grande was all red, now they're black with some red, and La Gruya used to be all blue, now they're, what color?
Uh, they're either gonna be black with gray or navy blue with gray. They're still thinking on that.
And Mr. Paul suggested that maybe they can bring them to us before, and I think it might be a good idea so we can see.
A sample, like in picture, or the real traje?
Just pictures.
Okay. We can do that.
Any other questions? Any, if not, all those in favor signify by saying, let me, uh, let the record reflect that Dr. Barrera joined the meeting again. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And we're approving these? We were approving these?
We're on item sixteen through twenty.
Yes, but it was, we said that they were gonna be approved, or we're asking him to bring it first and then get approved?
No, the the uniforms have been approved.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, all we're asking to see the color scheme.
Okay.
And the only thing is, Rio Grande, if you looked at our mariachis, they're always red, 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 and Rio was blue. And that's fine, but like to see them, to see how they look, basically.
They were, uh, black with the red stitching and silver before the red ones. And then we went to red, and now going back to black, but with a two-tone, so it's gonna have red also, so.
But they're getting them, right, sir?
Yes, and thank you very much, yes.
Thank you.
Let's go to item twenty-one, twenty-two. Considering take possible action, renewal of legal services agreement between Walsh, Gallegos, and Robinson, Rio Grande City, Gruya, and consider, uh, considering take possible action requesting for Rio Grande City I S D health insurance data from T R S to initiate competitive pricing. I'm a little familiar with with, uh, number twenty-two, that is, correct me, our loss run statement they want from our insurance to see if there's something that may be possibly a little cheaper than that. And the first one, I think, is they, these are the people we kind of put in the retainer, correct, Mr. Salinas?
That is correct, sir. We're just, uh, asking permission to grab our data from T R S Insurance to see what our loss runs look like and and possibly follow the timeline that's seen on your handout on page, uh, two seventy, two seventy-three. This is just a possible timeline, if the data's favorable, you go for R F Ps. And of course, if the premiums are better for our employees and we explore that route, if they're not, then we we stick to T R S. So that's basically what we're doing here.
Any questions?
And twenty, and twenty-one is just basically a certain issues, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's a thousand dollar a year retainer, um, it's for our sped. Mr. Salasat does handle most of our sped situations, uh, but we have had them on retainer for for a few years now.
Dr. Argario, in your opinion, who's better?
But this is used for, like, in in, on occasions that you, it's like, uh, like more of a conflict of of interest for you, or what? When would we use these other attorneys?
What it does is, we have, we've had them for years. Most school districts have them for years. And basically, we have them for any personnel issues. If there's something that Dr. Salinas or the superintendent or myself want to call them specifically on personnel, they, we can call them one time or ten times or a hundred times, and it's a thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
So it's like a reference. And we also use Walsh, Gallegos on other, uh, cases that our insurance carrier pays for. We don't pay for them, but they're they're on the approved list, uh, so that's what it's for. But I do handle pretty much ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of all of our personnel issues, and I handle a hundred percent of our special ed issues, so we don't ever call them on special ed.
With that said, with that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can we have a motion to approve items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five?
So move.
Second. Okay, the only, uh, the only thing on item twenty-five? Okay. That's a great thing to provide, uh, pictures for for kids. And on item twenty-five, correct me if I'm wrong, they provide the photo booth for free, and he gets sponsors from around, around the, uh, the community, right?
That is correct, sir.
And I have no problem, and my only thing, my only caveat would be getting sponsors, businesses, not a problem, individuals, not a problem. Just let's stay away from politics.
Yes, sir.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah, so to explain a little bit about that, it's, um, uh, it's called B T A, photo booth services, so they will be bringing photos, um, a a photo booth. And it will be, um, sponsors will pay for those pictures, and then basically, it's a free service for our kids. They get their picture, and the businesses, um, you know, get market.
Will sponsor and up to four hundred.
They're gonna have, for example, uh, a picture, and it's gonna say sponsored by, uh, let's call it Alpha Termite Company. And it's gonna say that. And I'm saying, as long as they're just companies, and let's stay away from the politics of politics, okay?
Yes, sir.
With that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Villas, I don't think we had a motion for twenty-one and twenty-two, and we didn't have a motion for this. So we did have a motion and a second.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve items twenty-one and twenty-two?
I saw move.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And the same thing for twenty-three to twenty-five, we also need them.
That's okay.
I saw move to approve this, President.
Okay, motion, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, J, motion second?
Second.
J, uh, polled the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can we have a motion to approve items twenty-six and twenty-seven as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second. Any more discussion?
For twenty-six, right?
Yeah, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Uh, well, twenty-six, I just wanted to propose something, I don't know if it's possible with Ms. Morris. I know we said that, that's for the T S I, right? For that one, they're having to ta- take three tutoring classes before taking it. Or who's over there? Okay. So my question was just, um, because I've heard some concerns, and and my daughter also took it. Is there any way that the first time they take it, they didn't have to do the tutoring? And maybe, I know that for, uh, some laws, you need to do the, show that they're doing some tutoring if they don't get like a good score. But my question is, because of those kids that have, like, U I L, have band, have athletics sometimes, they're unable to do the tutoring session, and so then they kind of get discouraged from taking the T S I?
Okay, well, the tutoring is going with the tutoring program that we have with the federal programs. We have tutors available for them. What we did, we were gonna have three tutoring sessions for them before they were able to test. We lowered it down to two, because some campuses wouldn't be able to provide three tutoring sessions, so we brought it down to two. We brought it down to two instead of three.
And that's after school?
Uh, after school, yes. And they, the students have tested before, they do get a locator code if they're, they're not successful on the test, and with the locator code, they can log into the Accuplacer account and, uh, practice with the test. Where that locator code is gonna give them the questions that they need assist, help with. So it's focused on their area of need, if they've tested before.
So it's important for them to take the tutoring, okay. And, uh, but they do have opportunity where their, you know, band directors and their athletics and everybody will let them come to these.
They do have opportunities, they do have opportunities, and also the campuses do offer academies, uh, throughout the school year, so we do have that also for them. There, there, we have certain academies that they're able to do throughout the school day, that they're able to do that as well in order to test. And there's other students that are enrolled in the T S I classes, the T S I E L O or the T S I math. And students that are enrolled in those classes don't need to attend the tutorial sessions, because they're enrolled with a teacher, and they're doing their 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 practice with the teacher.
And the reason we implemented this, um, about three years ago is that we had neighboring school districts that were finding themselves in issues with, uh, over testing students without the proper remediation. So when we saw our neighboring districts getting in trouble with T S I, as far as they were just testing kids, testing kids, testing kids, and they were coming to us and asking us, what is it that you have in place? We continued to do the tutoring, and then they test. Because prior to us having any kind of system, kids were just testing left and right, left and right. And then about three years ago, we had a situation where, uh, we almost lost our ability to be a a T S I provider or a testing site. So we said, we have to embed systems in place, and we were required at the time to come up with an action plan, and that's where this stemmed from. And it's been working for us, it's been able to, uh, have some kind of documentation as the kids move forward from one section to another. So that's the reason for that. It started with a corrective action plan, and it's something we continue to do, and, uh, we've just embedded it in our system. But it's, it's working well, and it's, if we were ever to get audited, all our documentation is there. Why we tested a kid two times in one week? Well, they did their tutorial, they tested Monday, they came to tutorial two times, and they tested again Saturday. So it's to take care of our kids that might be testing a little bit more often and might raise a flag to T S I.
Okay, and, uh, the testing will be done here?
Yes. And there will be, for the kids from La Gruya, there will be a bus to bring them here. Yes.
Yes, mhm, yes.
Let me ask, the tutorials, that you say there's a tutorials that can go log in?
Yes, we have, we do have different programs that are able to help them, but we do have programs through the tutorial. We have teachers that stay after school with, uh, tutorials to help them with T S I, E L O, or math. Then they all can, they can also use a locator code. Once they test it, once they take the exam, and they're not successful, they can use that locator code, and they have specialized questions for the area of need. And then we do also have programs through Ingenuity that they're able to practice through T S I with that as well.
So does it, does the program, does... So does it, does the program, does it have a self-teaching it, or not, in other words, it gives a question, does it teach them how to solve the problem?
It goes over everything, yes it does, yes it does, yes it does.
Any more questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's go to item twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, as presented in our board packet, can I have a motion to approve those items?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Sir, second, questions? The only one I, I'm gonna be asking a question is, um, on the, uh, considering take possible action on truancy incentive action plan. The problem we have today, I, I think, is that, uh, we, we've had a lot of alerts lately, if you wanna come, Mr. Yer, a lot of alerts on, on kids doing bad things, and that's basically hindering our attendance. How, how can we get, not necessarily how do we get around it, how can we assure that kids are gonna be safe so they can attend school? I've been told that when those things come out in, in the social media pages, our attendance kind of dips, and, uh, there's a, I don't wanna say mass hysteria, but there's a, and a more alert sense about that between kids and parents and things of that nature, so let me pass it on to you, Mr. Yer.
Okay, thank you, sir, uh, good evening, members of the board, and, uh, staff, and, uh, Ms. Morris, Inter Superintendent. Yes, we have had those this previous, previous week and today and yesterday, and we have it around the, you know, the whole state, it's not only here, it's in the valley. We have some in Ed Cowes, some in McAllen, some here in Urbey, La Jolla, and so on. But, uh, what we have seen, like, today, and I meet with, uh, with Mr. Bart Martinez every time that we see all this dips in attendance, what we see is that these kids right away, with, I think there's, should be more awareness on, on behalf of our schools, to our parents and principals, to be calling home, that's why we use our truancy department. And we do weekly meetings, every, as a matter of fact, tomorrow, we're gonna meet, and we're gonna take this, these parents that were not coming in, because as you can see, in the, we go out in the community to a store or anything, you will see kids right now in stores while they should be in school, but because they're afraid, okay? But we have the most secure schools, we have metal detectors, we have an officer in every school, we have securities, our, our administration's always on the top front. So it is the awareness that we need to provide to our, to our parents, our community, and we, I know that Ms. Morris is very good at sending those emails and those letters. But as a community, us here, all of us, we have, we have kids, we have nephews, we have grandkids, including myself, so we need to also, let the community know that we're here for them. I, I, I was in veterans on Monday, I was stationed there in my veterans, and I saw a lot of kids coming, and the ones that were not coming, you could see in the, in the cafeteria where they, they mingle. And, uh, you know, some of them are afraid, some of the parents were asking me, sir, are we okay leaving our kids? And I would say, yes, of course, they're probably more secure here because we have, we have, uh, police officers, we have securities, we have, all of us working together to keep them safe. But our, our approach with the truancy officers is gonna be calling home those kids that were, didn't show up yesterday, to call them and to show up tomorrow. And hopefully, you know, I know that it, it hit us from, all the way from the preschoolers to all the way to high school. But this is happening across, you know, the state, across the valley. But the awareness, the kids need to know there's consequence for that, you know, they easily propose those things on the internet, not thinking of who's gonna get affected, not thinking that the parents are taking it seriously, which it should be taken seriously, but the awareness on behalf of our school district, on behalf of our community, and us that we go to, like Mr. Pope said, when you go to a, to a home, you see how they live, you see how it's going on, what's going on, some, some kids live together. You know, the area of the Gruia side, we're missing a lot of kids today, why? Because they have a lot of siblings, they have a lot, the one is in the elementary, the one middle school and high school. So if one doesn't go, there go three absences, and so on, and you know that we get funded by, by attendance, and we're, we're hurting there, but we're gonna try our best to do that. We have a planning of action too, that you can see, I, I forward to you, uh, and we're gonna consider that, and every single day, we call, we have a, we check, our attendance people are doing every single day calling. They're checking with their PIMS, checking their coding correctly, and so on. If we get our kids to go to school, at least to go to their second periods, to count, be counted present, that's all we need, but we need everybody's help.
Let me ask you, Balta, maybe a question for you. And, and, of, of course, you don't wanna divulge all the safety features we have in school, but is there a way of maybe making a video, putting out to the community, like, light detectors, this and that, and, and it's a catch-22, I understand?
It, it's probably not in the best interest, because we, we, I mean, the board knows, our security officers know, our principals know, our teachers know, that we do have some security features that we don't advertise. Whether it's entry, whether it's exit, whether it's i- in the case of an, of an emergency, we do have them in place. Uh, I, I was, I was reading where the shooting incident that occurred, uh, a couple of days ago, they had them, and that's why there was not more, uh, more people injured. So we do have them in there, but we, it's not a good idea to publicize and say, oh, by the way, if you come in through this door, X is gonna happen, because then you're gonna make, you're gonna make people aware of it, but, I mean.
I think it's, it is important that we do like a big campaign, like a major thing, and like when we had all those As everywhere, we need to have now a campaign of everywhere you turn and see billboards, you know, Facebook everywhere saying the consequences for this, and, uh, educating the parents, having the parents get more responsible with talking to their kids. I think we need to kind of have like a big, I know I talked to Ms. Morris about it, we need to really communicate and, and really get the parents more educated and involved.
And maybe bringing in some parents or groups of parents that wanna come, and show them the safety features, but not, not the whole public, I just, because it's good to educate them, but, but the, the problem is, it's not the parents that are gonna come in, it's that.
You don't wanna let the bad element, understand.
It's been that one strange student that comes in, and, and that's the one that we're trying to keep the information from. But there's no problem with bringing in parents as a group and telling them, you know, these are features that we don't want everybody to know, but trust us, we know what we're doing, our security party.
And that was one question that I had for you, what are your efforts as a truancy department, but you're saying that you are calling the parents, especially those that missed, and you're reassuring them that we have, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to keep their kids safe?
And also, we have a Google form this live, that, uh, myself and Mr. Bart Martinez help checking and then calling the, the truancy officers, you know what, is the, how come these students are not coming, what's going on?
And you're calling, it's not an automated.
Yes, and they put in, they updating the notes and everything, yes.
And I think the other thing that, that the general public doesn't know is that TEA sends people into our school districts, uh, without any, without us getting any notice, and they come, and they say, you know what? The gate was not locked, you didn't have security, there was not this, there was not that. The general public doesn't see those reports, but I can assure you, the report comes to the board and says, you know what, at this middle school, you're missing this.
We had two today, uh, Mr. Salasat, there was two, and we got a hundred on both, so, uh, it's the work that the principals do, the systems they have in place, so I wanna congratulate the principals for, they're unannounced, and we had two today in the midst of all the chaos, and they did excellent. I think one of the campuses did way beyond their expectations, so congratulations to you all. Uh, it is definitely the work that you do, you're not just doing it this week, you're not doing it these last couple of days, you've been doing it for a long time, so congratulations to those campuses that had their safety check, and they're not, we don't know when they're coming, and it was TA that was here today. So, uh, kudos to the campus principals that are there day in and day out.
Well, Mr. Yer, you keep trying to do as much as you can.
Yes, sir, I will, thank you.
How often are the, are the students and, and parents going to court?
Well, we, that's one thing that we added this year, we didn't have that, um, now it's gonna be the whole district, we're gonna have them here, hold them here in the, the auditorium. How often is, we started with a, the, we have to send by, by TA, we have to send, it's a requirement to send letters to the parents, also calling, right, calling and sending letters. But also, we're gonna have, it's a three and then six letters, and then nine, after that, you know, they continue being absent for a reason, unexcused absences, then we'll bring them to court. Now, it's not only to cite them, there's a lot of things prevention that we can do, you know, mandatory tutorials, they have to make up those hours, especially in high school, they have to get credit or regain the credit for those things. Some, some can be a spreadsheet where you have the, the, the periods, the, the teacher signing that the student was there, you know, kind of checking balance for the kid to be there present in school. You know, we have different times, senior, uh, interventions that we're gonna, we're gonna provide to the judges, to the judge, and at the end, the last resort would be a citation, which we don't wanna get there until we exhaust everything, okay? So that's something that is gonna help us also, yes, in the long run, but, uh, as well, we have a, we also were looking at the, the kids that didn't come at all anymore since the COVID area, era, okay? We have quite a few, we're trying to recapture those as well, the, the, the truancy officers are doing that, but a lot of them, some of them have exited already from the high school, from the age group. But the ones that were not, or if they didn't go anywhere else, or they were in, in a, in, in homeschooling, so we're trying to get them back, trying to sell our district with all the initiatives, the things that we have. There are other, other schools don't have, other districts, okay? So that's, that's another part of the initiatives, another intervention, that you might call it, uh, all those things we're doing, and it's gonna pay off, but right now, we're going through these threats and, and it's, it's affecting us. That's all I'm gonna say about that.
Before, I, I know for a fact that before, to take kids to the courts is very easy, now you have to send a bunch of paperwork before you even get them to court.
Oh, yes, yes, there's a lot of work that we have to do, yes.
With that said, all those in favor, uh, to approve items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, as presented in our board agenda, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. This time, let's have a motion to approve item thirty-one, uh, concerning take possible action on the renewal of on-data suite, uh, software, uh, motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. At this time, can we have a motion to approve items thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five as presented in our board packet?
I saw move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, uh, the one I, I would like to talk about is, uh, it, item thirty-four and thirty-five says pending, uh, availability of funds. I just wanna make sure that before we spend those large amounts of dollars, that we do have the funds.
Uh, yes, so for the library resources, we, no, item thirty-four, this is the interactive online grant, we do have the funds, we received three hundred thousand dollars for the grant, it's been approved for two years. This is a grant that is going to sponsor, uh, social studies and ELO teachers to collaborate, to integrate the lessons. So, uh, we do have, uh, the funding. And, um, the next one, the Library Cooperative, this is, um, a program that has been funded through federal programs traditionally, and, uh, the funding was allocated at the end of the school year last year too. So we are good with that money.
We do have the funding, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Because. It's from the SCE. Okay. Again, just to make sure we have the funding forward before we spend the money. Any other questions on any of the other, one other one that maybe could give us a little idea of what, uh, flexible school day, and, uh, somebody can explain what that is, please?
Good evening, yeah, uh, the, uh, the last board meeting, uh, we would, we discussed, we were asking for permission to look into the optimal, optimal flexible schedule. And what that is, is that we're trying to recruit the kids that we lost from the COVID era, uh, COVID, the COVID era till now. And what that does, it allows us to, to target those kids that are not, not coming to school or have a difficult coming to school because of, either they're working, or they don't have the means to come to the school, so we're trying to recruit those kids. And after looking at, after looking at how this could help us as a district, we wanna pursue, uh, op, uh, offering the optimal schedule. But before we do that, it has to be board-approved, a, a part of the application, it has to be board-approved.
We make the application to TA?
To TA.
Okay.
So we'll do the application, and what happens there is that any kid that, that qualifies for opt, uh, the opt, the, well, actually, the flexible schedule, they have to be at risk. So all the kids that, that we're targeting right now, that we, we looked into the information, we look into why they're not coming, we have a, a target group already, we wanna, we wanna pursue, so this allows us to pursue those kids, because the funding for ADA, we can go all the way from the age of eighteen to twenty-six to get, uh, funding for those kids. So there's a lot of kids that we made contact with already, that for whatever reason, they dropped out, and we're, right now, what we're looking at are the juniors and seniors, where that's, that was, that's our biggest hit right now. Just for example, Rio High has always had four hundred and forty graduates, four hundred and fifty graduates, right now, the senior class of Rio High is three hundred and fifty kids. So somewhere along the way, we lost ninety kids, so, uh, the same thing happened to Gruia, so, so, and same thing happened to early college, so we wanna target those kids, and the, the only way we can recruit those kids, or try to get those kids back, is to off, offer the flexible schedule, because all these kids right now are working, so what happens on the schedule, the, the, their attendance is not gonna be counted second period. Their attendance is gonna be, it's gonna be every two hundred and forty minutes that they do work, that they're in class, we get one, uh, one, uh, one day of funding for them. So this will help us recu- uh, recuperate like those kids that we've been missing.
How many, how many children do you think you can put in this program?
How many kids can we, if we, if we offer, like, the way we're looking into it?
How many people qualify for this program, do you think?
We have right now, right now on the target list, we have, we have a hundred and eighty-eight kids that we can try and, try and bring back. So that's, that's, that's our focus right now, and it also, we can also apply this to their, to our current kids that are enrolled at the campuses right now, but for whatever reason, they're not coming, they're not, they're truant. And it's like, Mr. Yer has a, uh, said, like, we have kids that are, that are absent, uh, one time, one day, but that household might have three or four kids, so now you're losing four kids. So the way this, this would help us is that those days that they're absent, we can recruit those days as long as it's within the six weeks period. So it, it is gonna entail a lot of work, but it's something that I think we need to apply so that we can try to, to, to gain back some of the students that we've lost.
I, I misunderstood it the last time you brought it up, I thought you were applying it all the way across the board, but you're just doing certain cohorts of students, right?
Yes, yeah, cause right now, um, again, I'm, I'm looking at it because I'm always looking at the, at the attendance daily, and like this, this week, like yesterday and today was just unbelievable, but it's because of those threats that were made. We had a lot of kids that were absent for the first time, but, I mean, it, it, stuff happens, and we, we just gotta make sure we can try to recruit those days, that as long as it's within the six weeks, we can recruit those days. So it's something that I think would benefit the school district.
And you're targeting at-risk, at-risk students, correct?
Yes, that you have to be at risk, you have to be coded at risk in order to qualify to be coded, to be put in this flexible schedule.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Martinez, appreciate it. If not, all those in favor, uh, of, uh, signal, uh, all those in favor of approving items thirty-two, eight, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. At this time, can we have a motion to approve items thirty-six and thirty-seven as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Again, the only one I have is on item thirty-seven, it says pending availability, uh, buying some, uh, permission to buy Chromebooks.
Good evening, once again, uh, yes, so it says a pending availability, but we do have the funding. We, um, are using three different funding sources, which is the EMAT, which is for textbooks, and we can buy devices through there, that is taking the bulk of it. We're using the interactive online grant that was item thirty-four for a hundred thousand, and thirty thousand are coming from federal programs.
So basically, you were buying Chromebooks to the tune of five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
How many Chromebooks does that?
One thousand two hundred and ninety.
And those are gonna be specifically targeted to?
For all students, we are creating, our tar, our goal is to create class sets, uh, for ELO and math, and complete class sets. What that means is that if a teacher has, let's say, twenty, enrollment of twenty-five students, they get twenty-five, um, devices, and at least twelve devices for science and social studies. That, that's at this, at this time.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
This time, can we have a motion to approve item thirty-eight as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. At this time, can we have a, a motion to approve items thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and forty-two as presented in our board packet, if anybody has discussion, can I have a motion? If anybody has discussion, can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. No, I have no discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's go to item, can we have a motion to approve items 43, 44, and 45 as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, under the authority of Texas Code and Code Section 551.071, 551.084, we are now going into the closed session, the time? 8:11. We are now recommitting an open session. Let's go to item, section nine, item A, do I have a motion?
A motion to approve is discussed in closed session?
An executive session.
Executive or closed?
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? All opposed, same sign. Item B?
Same motion.
Okay. A motion to, as, as discussed in executive session, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C?
Same motion as discussed in executive session.
Motion to, uh, recommendations for employment vacant position, as discussed in a closed session, do I have a, a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Item D, no action, item E, no action, and item F?
I motion to approve item F as discussed in executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion for adjournment?
So move.
Okay, we're done?
Second.
You have a second into motion to adjourn? No, we didn't take a vote on that, let's stay here. No, 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 we're still, we're still in session, John.